I'd like to call the Board of Trustees. Regular meeting Monday, November 4, 2019, at 6:30 to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of meeting agenda.
Mr. Supervisor, two corrections or changes. Number one is removing item K, the employee flex time discussion, and replacing that with Township Resolution 2019-5, which is regarding the drainage district bond.
Thank you. Any other additions or deletions?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda with the change to letter K.
I'll support.
Motion by Trustee Gurley, supported by Clerk Candell. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Approval of minutes, 10:07, 2019, 10:15, 2019. I have no issues with that. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from 10:07, 2019, and 10:15, 2019, as written.
Second.
A motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Thank you. Public comment? Any public comment at this time?
Public announcements.
Oh, I'm sorry. Public announcements first, then public comment.
Okay. Public announcement? Good evening. Lennox and New Haven's Community Dinner. It is Friday, November 22nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and residents, it's free Thanksgiving dinner to the residents, and they all ask for a non-perishable food item for the pantry. Again, yes. Friday, the 22nd of November.
Thank you. Any other public announcement?
I have one. Tomorrow, we will be hosting an election, Anchor Bay School Bond District, or Bond Proposal, and a Richmond Schools Bond Proposal.
Okay. Thank you.
Hold open at seven. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Karen Owens, and I am the Director of the Lennox Township Library. I have come today because the Board of Trustees of the Lennox Township Library would like to make an addition to the name of the library. We have our first Director. We'd like to honor her by adding her name to the library. And so, instead of being just "The Lennox Township Library," it will be "The Jean Waterloo/Lennox Township Public Library." I think it'll be a nice addition. I think it's a very good way to honor her because she has been, she has been very, very, very instrumental in getting the library running and going. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other public announcement? Public comment? No public comments? Number seven, public hearing. Lennox Township, City of Richmond Mutual Annexation and Detachment Forbearance Agreement.
Make a motion, we open the public hearing for the Lennox Township, City of Richmond Mutual Annexation and Detachment Forbearance Agreement at 6:34.
I second. I have a motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Trustee Clifford. Any questions? Deputy Kirk, roll call, please.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
We do have the original annexation agreement that was...
Just basically...
A proof you may. Right. And it's a continuance of the same agreement that we have had with Richmond. There's no changes, and there's really not a lot that we can do with the agreement other than to sign it, but a public hearing needs to be held.
Attorney Edison?
The only change in the original agreement is that we took it upon ourselves to remove self-executing language, so that, I don't know if there's one of that.
There you go.
There you go. Now, we took it upon ourselves to remove some older self-executing language, which meant at the end of the agreement, certain things would happen without renegotiation. That language with the agreement of Lennox and Richmond has been removed, so at the end of the agreement, it will have to be talked about again and decided whether or not it remains in the mutual benefit of both entities to continue with it. At this time, it certainly appears to be.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have none.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for the Lennox Township, City of Richmond Mutual Annexation and Detachment Forbearance Agreement at 6:36.
I'll second.
Motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Any questions?
I have none.
Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Candell?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Public hearing closed, 6:36. Number eight, consent agenda. All items listed under this consent agenda are considered routine by the Township Board and will be enacted by one motion. According to established Township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the Board or public soul requests at or prior to the meeting, in which event, the Chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under Agenda Item Number Nine below. Approval of the consent agenda shall be by a majority roll call vote of both present and voting.
I'd like to present orders and bills in the amount of $478,013.07.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the orders and bills in the amount of $478,013.07.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Gurley, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Once again, any questions? Discussion? Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Gurley?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And no items removed from the consent agenda. Number ten, unfinished business.
Yeah, both, A and B are both mine. The community room window carpet proposal, we've had some contractors bowing in and out. We currently have one consistent bid with fixed panels on these windows on an angle, and we're waiting for one to, a price on motorized shades, so we can regulate it. If we put the fixed ones up, nobody wants to tackle this one. I've called three or four contractors, Home Depot, and nobody even wants to come out. I have two, but I'm waiting on the quote for the motorized ones, so I'd like to, at this time, make a motion, well, I'll do it under both of them. Township Reader Board signed proposal. In your packet, you had two designs from Phillips Sign Company, and two designs from Display Mix. We have to set lot one from each company and then have them put the exact price to it. Everybody's seen them. I've had them out for a week around the office. Do you have any changes? I mean, Kathy, and I, and Ron, and Michelle, I haven't seen you, but we'll go over that and decide which one, definitely one price on. So, at this time, I'd like to table both of those till next month, until I have exact prices from all four vendors.
All right.
I make a motion to table two items in unfinished business.
Number ten, A and B.
A and B.
I'll second.
Motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Once again, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Thank you. Number eleven, new business. Lennox Township, City of Richmond Mutual Annexation and Detachment Forbearance Agreement.
I will make a motion that we approve the Lennox Township and City of Richmond Mutual Annexation and Detachment Forbearance Agreement as presented.
Thank you. Motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Discussion? Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Candell?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Letter B, Lennox Township, City of Richmond Mutual Annexation and Detachment Forbearance Agreement Resolution.
Yes, you should all have in front of you a resolution titled, "A Resolution to Adopt a Mutual Detachment and Annexation Forbearance Agreement Between the City of Richmond and Lennox Township," Resolution Number 2019-3. Do I need to read it out loud for the record?
Yes.
She agreed to hold it properly presented. Okay. If you mean what, let's be certain.
Okay.
You should.
I will read it out loud. Whereas the City of Richmond and Lennox Township have agreed to the mutual detachment and annexation forbearance of certain property located within the boundaries of the City of Richmond, commonly and locally known as Muttonville. Whereas this agreement concerning detachment and annexation forbearance has been memorialized in writing, whereas pursuant to the written agreement, the public hearing commensurate with the notice requirements of the Open Meetings Act must be held within Lennox Township before the execution of said agreement may be effected. Now therefore be it resolved that the application of aforementioned provisions of the agreement having been satisfied, Lennox Township hereby adopts and authorizes execution of the mutual detachment and annexation forbearance agreement between the City of Richmond and Lennox Township. That being said, I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-3, the resolution to adopt the mutual detachment and annexation forbearance agreement between the City of Richmond and Lennox Township.
Thank you.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Once again, any discussion? Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Candell?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Letter C, Public Safety Department Administration Fee.
All right. You should be looking at Resolution Number 2019-4, to establish an administration fee for services to the Lennox Township Fire Department. Whereas Public Act Two of 1968, MCL 141-421, authorizes the township to develop and amend a budget for Lennox Township, and whereas the Lennox Township Board desires to establish an administration fee to be transferred from the Lennox Township Fire Department. Whereas the Lennox Township Clerk's Office processes and maintains accounts payable for the Township of Lennox Fire Department, whereas the Lennox Township Clerk's Office processes and maintains all payroll records for the Lennox Township Fire Department. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lennox Township Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the transfer of the sum of $8,000 per fiscal year to reimburse the cost of performing accounting functions for the Lennox Township Fire Department.
I have nothing further.
I have nothing further. Clerk and I spoke about this issue, and she pointed out that the township was not compensated for the time a clerk will staff, that it takes to process the finances for the, for the, for the fire department. We settled on the number of $8,000, and she went forward with the resolution.
I would make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-4, to authorize the transfer in the amount of $8,000 per fiscal year to reimburse the cost of performing accounting functions for the Lennox Township Fire Department.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Arnold, supported by Trustee Clifford. Once again, any questions? Deputy Kirk, roll call, please.
Arnold?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Letter D, scissors-lit purchase reallocation proposal.
Mr. Supervisor, Township Board members, as you recall, back, I believe it was June, July, the Township, as well as Richmond Lennox EMS, entered into an agreement to purchase a scissors-lit for getting into the higher parts of our very tall Township structure of this building, DPW, the EMS buildings. At that point in time, we'd invited the fire department to participate in the purchase of that piece of equipment. They elected not to. My recommendation to the Board is that I believe that that piece of equipment will be valuable to the fire department buildings. They also have high ceilings and areas of repair and cleaning that need to be done on those buildings, and I made a recommendation that we split an amount with the fire department, basically, so it would take one-third of the funds and reimburse them back to the EMS and the DPW, and that way, that piece of equipment could be used in all Township buildings, not, not just the EMS Township, all the DPW structures.
Any other questions?
I have no questions. I think we need to rescind the original motion.
Yes, I realize. I'd like to make a motion to rescind the August 5, 2019 motion made by myself and seconded by Kathy Holland, to approve the purchase of the Skyjack SJ3-3226 scissors-lit to be owned jointly between Lennox Township and Richmond Lennox EMS at the cost of $14,960 through ULE sales. This is a motion to rescind that motion. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of the Skyjack SJ3-3226 scissors-lit at the cost of $14,960 through ULE Sales LLC to be owned equally between Lennox Township, Richmond Lennox EMS, and Lennox Township Fire, to be divided equally at the cost of $4,986.67 to each department.
Make it a second amendment precision, first, please.
I think you have to, because you were saying...
I'll second it the first time.
On the first motion of recent precision, a motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Need a vote on that, please. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. And on the second motion?
I should have read it for the second motion.
Okay. Second motion made by Mr. Clifford.
I'll second, the second motion, to split the purchase three ways.
All right. So, I have a motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Clerk Candell. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Thank you. Letter E, Budget Amendment to Allocate Public Safety Director Salary.
Okay. When we signed a contract for the Public Safety Director, we did not put in the budget where his salary was coming from. So, what we need is a, I'll make a motion to approve a budget amendment, taking $8,000 from the general fund and $4,000 from Pine Tree Acres Fund, and allocate $12,000 to the Public Safety Director's salary. Yes, ma'am, that was a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Any questions or discussion? Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Candell?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Letter F, Budget Amendment to Increase Assistant Chief and Captain Salary.
So, Mr. Supervisor and Board, this, this budget amendment really was just a recognition that following the retirement of Chief Fouchet, our Assistant Fire Chief, as well as the Captain of the Fire Department, too high a rank, members of our Fire Department leadership, have had to take on a number of extra duties and roles in order to keep our Fire Department operating efficiently. Both have been doing an exceptional job in those roles, and I had recommended to the, to the Clerk that we increase the Fire Chief and Fire Captain's salary. I believe you may have a recommendation actually in front of you, but basically, it increased Assistant Chief Hartway's wage to, their salary to $1,200 per month, and
Two motions. So, I will make a motion to approve a budget amendment to increase the Assistant Chief's salary from $605.54 per month to $1,200 per month, to compensate for additional responsibilities since the retirement of the Fire Chief, and to make this increase retroactive to include the month of October, 2019.
I second.
I have a motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Trustee Clifford. Any questions? Discussion? Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Letter G, Budget?
I still need to do a second, a second one. The second amendment, the second motion would be a motion to approve a budget amendment to increase the Captain's salary from, hold on, I got it here somewhere, $5,924 per month to $800 per month, to compensate for the additional responsibilities since the retirement of the Fire Chief, with the recommendation by the Public Safety Director that the increase be moved retroactive to include October, 2019.
I second.
Motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Trustee Gurley. Any questions? Deputy Kirk, please.
Candell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Letter G now, Budget Amendment to Reallocate Portion of the Fire Chief's Salary.
Going along with the two increases that we just made, I will make a motion to approve a budget amendment to allocate $6,500 from the Fire Chief's Salary Line Item into the Officer's Pay Line Item to include the coverages per the Public Safety Director's recommendation.
We're taking part of his salary to pay for the last...
Taking, yes, that is correct. Because we're no longer paying a full-time Fire Chief, we have funds in that line item, and we're just going to move them down to Officer Wages to cover those two.
I agree with that.
Are you supporting that?
Yeah. I know where this, I make a motion to approve a budget amendment to reallocate...
I already made a motion for a second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Trustee Clifford. Any questions or discussion? Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. White.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you to the Board, thank you to the Clerk's Office. We've been very busy the last month, just ramping up some of these, these issues, and everybody's been very patient with me as we, as we work through these items, and I kind of worked this, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for stepping up and handling that. Appreciate it. Letter H, Medical Marijuana Provisional Certificate Extension Request. Mr. Cassin. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Approximately, last year at this time, the Board, as you recall, granted six provisional licenses. Six provisional licenses, basically, from six entities, I think there were more than that, on the licenses, but the ordinance says that they expire this month, one year, from the date of awarding, but an applicant can request a six-month extension. At the current time, we still have four outstanding, two withdrawn in the past. We have four outstanding, three of which have asked for the six-month extensions. They are Mr. James Lillis Arkus, Michael Hadad, and Michael Torres, recommending that we grant those six-month extensions.
Any questions for Mr. Cassin?
I have none. Steve, I read your pick, or, looks good.
Do we need a separate?
Yes, we're going to need a...
Separate motion on each?
On each one.
Each one.
And, Mr. Cassin, your recommendation is to approve all three?
That is correct.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the extension of the medical marijuana provision, provisional certificate for Michael Torres, Akra?
One more time.
Yeah, Akra, for the period of 180 days to May 5, 2020.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Trustee Gurley, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Any questions? Discussion? Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Gurley?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
I would like to make, to make a motion to approve the extension of the medical marijuana provisional certificate issued to Michael Hadad of Nutri for a period of 180 days, making the current expiration date, May 5, 2020.
I second. A motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Trustee Clifford. Once again, any questions or discussion? Deputy Kirk, once again, please.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the extension of the medical marijuana provisional certificate for James Lillis Arkus of Belt Air Development LLC and Pure Goods LLC for the period of 180 days. That would be May 5, 2020.
Second. Motion by Treasurer Arnold, supported by Trustee Clifford. Once again, any discussion? Questions? Deputy Clerk?
Arnold?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Letter I, Park, Restroom, and Concession Building DTE Proposal. Mr. Safe, what do you think?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I believe the Board received my communication dated October 27. This is regarding, bring in power to the new concession building and bathroom. We basically have three options to choose from, to provide power to this new building. Option one and two, they are very close, but that would not give us any future expansion capabilities. Option three, which is almost four times higher, and since we don't have a plan for a future expansion, we are not recommending going with the, with option three. So, our recommendation is go with option number one, which is just tap in the existing transformer and go directly to the concession building.
Yeah, we don't know what's going to happen, it's, you know, if we went to item three, we wouldn't, like you said, and we don't know where we're going to plan for that park, so, if I had, it might be outdated if we did it now, like you said, so...
Correct. And if we design it properly, or, you know, the location change, and we bring power from a different location... from a different location, we may get DTE to give us a transformer, just like we did before.
How will we do it, so that I guess it's going to be directed at CAM2 on the house that needs to be torn down?
I'm sorry, say that again.
How are we doing on the, with the, I know we were going to use CBG funds to tear the house down that's out there.
I believe there's a patient that Mr. Cassin's working on. Do you want to give an update?
Okay.
That is part of the county's community development program in 2009. They have not received release of funds yet from the federal government. We're waiting on that, and then we'll begin.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Thanks for that. No problem.
I will make a motion that we approve the Detroit Edison proposal for the park restroom and concession building. Option one, at the engineer's recommendation at the cost of $14,777 to tap into the existing transformer and the dumpster to power the concession building.
I second.
I have a motion by clerk Candell, supported by trustee Clifford. Once again, any questions, discussion? Deputy clerk, roll call please.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Hahnell?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Safe. Letter J, 26 Mile Road and County Line Road Intersection Cooperative Improvement Initiative.
Well, actually, you should probably summarize it for...
Alright, I got it. We just received a correspondence from the supervisor of Ira Township, Mr. Endress. He was just looking for some support in the 26 Mile Road County Line intersection. It's, they'd like to improve that intersection. It's a very dangerous intersection. And he would like four communities, Chesterfield, Lennox, Ira, and Castle, to participate in finding out what they can do to improve that intersection. It's a high-traffic volume. We've had deaths in that intersection. And he would like to improve it. I guess that's the best summarization I can put. There's been no monetary amount attached to it at this time, but to go forward and to look and see if we can get something done on it, basically. I guess that's the best way I can summarize it.
Mr. Endess. My understanding, Mr. Supervisor, is that you are being requested to sign a letter to the managing director of the road commissions of both Macomb County and St. Clair County. But you, on your own, cannot author such a letter. The entire board, after offering public discussion, has to approve such a letter being sent over the supervisor's signature. There are no numbers in here. There's no offer that I see to pay any money or no suggestion that the township will pay any money. And that's what should be known. For that matter, it's proper if the board is so inclined that that is the way they would like to act.
What we're just doing is authorize him not to speak.
To sign the letter. To sign the letter as stated. There's no further speaking. Just to sign the letter as stated.
Okay.
While you're authorized.
Okay.
I will make a motion to approve the signature of the Lennox Township supervisor on the letter to the St. Clair County Road Commission and Macomb County Department of Roads as stated for the cooperative improvement initiative.
I second.
I have a motion by clerk Candell, supported by trustee Gurley. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Letter K, resolution 2019-5.
We have in front of you a resolution that was sent to me from the Macomb County Public Works regarding Drainage District Refunding of Bonds. I will read it if you want me to, but it's a couple pages long. So, and it will be published. It's out there. Everybody got it in their packet, so.
Yeah, I don't see it to be necessary.
Thank you.
Does that, do you make a motion to...
I will make a motion to approve resolution 2019-5 approving the continuing disclosure undertaking of the North Grasham Interceptor Drainage District Drainage District Refunding Bonds Series 2020 as presented by the Macomb County Department of Roads.
Second.
I have a motion by clerk Candell, supported by treasurer Honald. Get any discussion or questions? Deputy clerk, roll call please.
Candell?
Aye.
Hahnell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Number 12, public comment. Yes, sir.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Ted McGregor. I am a proposed marijuana grower, processor, and provisional center person in the future of Lennox Township. And I want to make a few public comments and share something with this austere committee that I think you probably know, but in case you don't, I want to share it. I got into this, I'm a corporate executive, not retired, that started his own business. I got into this because I had a grandson with four-stage Hodgkin's lymphoma. And thank God, he's out of it. But I saw the value of medical marijuana getting him through that. My family all felt that this was something that would be a good family business. So I actually sold my chemical company and I'm investing in Lennox Township. The value in this is that a lot of people misunderstand that this is going to be analytically controlled instead of buying from street merchants and criminals. You'll be buying, whoever buys it, quality goods that's controlled by the state. And that appeals to me because I actually started the largest analytical laboratory in the state many, many years ago, RTI. So my investment, by the time I'm through here, will be over a million dollars. And I think it's a good investment. And I want to shovel ready tomorrow. I want to start this tomorrow. I mean, that's how excited I am about doing this. And as you probably know, it's starting to come up crashing. East Pointers is looking at it. Rosemont's looking at it. Harrison Township's starting it. Mount Clements already has a 600,000 square foot. So from a business standpoint, I'm getting a little desperate in that I want to be one of the first people in Lennox Township or in this area to start this business. And I want to, you know, bring the water into the building. I want to upgrade the building, which I think you all know as CNS up the street. It's a strong building, but it's a little ramshackled. I want to make it look like something that Lennox will be proud of and certainly that my organization and my family will be proud of. So I want to be the first, not the last, to come up crashing. The market determines when you go into something, you find something you really like in a place you really like, in someplace that respects you, you want to come back to them. And when you're coming up and down crashing, it's a wonderful place because you have Richmond and New Haven and Baltimore and, you know, all of the good people from Marysville and Fort Worth potentially that could create this market. And that's also a good tax base, which I like to pay taxes because that means I make money. I've never objected to taxes. The availability of product, if you're reading this in the state, because the state is pulling back a little and pushing and pulling back, there isn't a lot of product. So the people who are doing this are reaching out, trying to get product. And that's why we make our own product. And thank God, it's a state situation. We make the product. We don't have to send it off. It's all here at Lennox. So we don't have to get it from someplace else. We control it. And so it's us versus other communities. Now, my decision, and it still is, and I think it's a good one, is to make my investment in Lennox Township. And the only problem I have with the investment is I'm a little concerned about the other guys coming up from Detroit and doing county by county by county, because these people are moving fast. And, you know, I don't have to tell you guys that there's a lot of money out there, a lot of some big company money. Now, I'm not a big company. I'm a smaller company. But I still will have to put a million dollars into Lennox and then grow from there. I don't intend to stop at that point. I want to keep growing and growing and growing and make myself a good citizen inside of Lennox Township and my organization. So I only ask that you consider, I understand these people extending their capabilities and want to extend their license, but that means you're not ready to move. And I don't understand that because, again, I see that I have the Michigan approval. I see Lennox, my shovel goes in the ground. My water comes in right away. My building and my land's approved. I have phase one, I have phase two, I have the wells closed up. I'm ready. I'm ready to go. So I want to ask you to consider that because all of us that want to do this now are in a desperate situation that we want to be the first and the best. But to be the best, actually, we almost have to be the first. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Kind of representing my mother-in-law, Henrietta Clark, daughter over there. She purchased that property, CNS, in 1955. Her and Hank have been there since 1955. When Hank passed away, I took over the business. And we thought that we would sell the business so she could enjoy her retirement. We talked her into it. She had her doubts. She made sure we renewed the license in case something went south. We could continue scrapping cars again because that's what Hank would have wanted. She asked Sherry once a week, "What the hell's going on? Why is it taking so long?" "Ma, things take time." So I guess I'm asking for her, "Do we have some kind of a timeline?" She's pushing us. She wants me to open the scrapyard back up because that's what she wants to do. We're telling her to be patient. But where I'm speaking, I guess I'm asking for her. She says, "I'm 88. I don't have all day of beta waiting for all this stuff." So I guess I'm just asking if I can give her some kind of an answer.
Well, sir, it's a public comment time. It's not a question and answer time. You can feel free to stop by the township offices. Mr. Cassin can be with you at any time.
I just want to go in here and say...
Sure, sure. The other public comment.
Number 13, closed session. Letter A, for purposes of discussing employee review and legal opinion with the township attorney.
Make a motion that we adjourn to closed session at 7:12.
Second. I have a motion by clerk Candell, supported by trustee Clifford. Any questions?
Smile.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Hahnell? Aye.
Closed session, 7:12.
Return from closed session at 7:35. Second.
I have a motion by clerk Candell, supported by treasurer Honald. Any discussion? Deputy clerk, roll call please.
I'm sorry, I didn't get that support.
Hahnell?
Hahnell, okay.
Candell?
Aye.
Hahnell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Open session, 7:35. Motion passes.
Yes, I'm going to make the motion. I make a motion that we move forward as advice by legal counsel in closed session.
Second.
I have a motion by clerk Candell, supported by trustee Clifford. Any discussion or questions? Deputy clerk, roll call please.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Hahnell?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Make a motion we adjourn at 7:36. I think they're declared there.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Clifford, supported by trustee Gurley. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, meeting adjourned.